I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, free and equal in its essence.
Thank you. First item we have tonight is the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, we have the approval of the February 11th, March 3rd special council meetings.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the February 11th, 2020, and March 3rd, 2020 special council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, please cast your ballots.
Nope.
All voting yes, motion carried. Next, we have authorization to pay bills. Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move we pay bills in an amount of $1,1,679.68.
Second. Been moved and seconded to pay bills in the amount of $1,1,679.68. Are there any questions on any of the bills? If not, please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried unanimously. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council on any matter? If not, we'll move right along to standing in special committees. First of all, Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Board of Public Works met on Monday, March 2nd, 2020 at 4:30 PM. We called order, motion, agenda accepted. The next item is wastewater treatment plant update. We reviewed the readings. Everything was good for the month. The next item was to consider approval of replacing sewage pumps in lift station number three at the wastewater treatment plant facility. Ben Gruehl explained that the pumps at lift station number three, 30 years old, have been rebuilt and repaired over the years, but continue to have issues. The old motors are also powered via the old 230 volt configuration. The cost to replace the pumps and upgrade to the standard 208 volt configuration is $15,650. It would be financed from the replacement fund. Motion made and seconded to replace the pumps at lift station number three. Motion carried by all. The next item was to approve a resolution to vacate a portion of State Street. At a previous Parks and Rec committee meeting, the Veterans Memorial Foundation requested to vacate the portion of State Street right-of-way within Taft Park. The Park and Recreation Committee agreed with the request, and CMS was created showing that the entire vacated portion of the street would merge and become part of Taft Park. Motion made and seconded to approve the proposed resolution. All motions carried by all. The next item, review proposed tab and recommend a contract for 2020 grass and vegetation cutting services. Only one proposal was received, that from Hoffman Cemetery Services, LLC for grass and vegetation cutting services to be used for private properties who violate the city's municipal code. Basically, what this is, if you don't mow your lawn, we hire out and go on your taxes. Motion carried by all. The next item was to consider approval for an agreement with the town of Mucka for brush and compost services. City Administrator Lewone worked with the town of Mucka on an agreement to allow town of Mucka residents to use the city's brush and compost drop-off sites. The town of Mucka would compensate the city $200 per month for three years of service. Motion made and seconded, carried by all. The next item was to review and consider an annual agreement with McMahon Associates Incorporated for general engineering services. An annual agreement was reviewed by the board for general engineering services with McMahon Associates. The agreement is for smaller civil engineering needs for typical costs under $5,000. Larger projects will have a separate agreement creating detailed, specific costs and scope of service. Motion made and seconded, carried by all. The next item was to approve a five-year agreement for uniform services. Elsco Linen and Uniform Rental Services is the city's current uniform contractor for wastewater treatment plant, street, parks, and facility employees. A five-year agreement extension was presented and discussed. Motion made and seconded, carried by all. In the director's report, memo was included in the agenda packet and reviewed by the committee. No other matters. Next month's agenda items, ATV routes ordinance, being no further motion. Minutes, motion was made and seconded, meeting adjourned at 5:01. I move to approve the 2020 grass and vegetation cutting services contract to Hoffman Cemetery Services LLC.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to award the 2020 grass and vegetation cutting services contract to Hoffman Cemetery Services. Is there any question or discussion on that item? Not, please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
The next item is to approve a three-year agreement with the town of Mucka for brush and compost services. To use our brush and compost sites.
Been moved and seconded to approve a three-year agreement with the town of Mucka for brush and compost services. Are there any questions or comments on that item? Tom.
How many locations?
Well, basically, we've got one. Well, no, I'm sorry, two. One down by the sewage plant where you can drop off when the gates are open, and behind the cemetery. Those two right there. The only other time we have it, if we, for example, during the bad storm last year, we had other sites open, just because of the amount of brush that was coming in. We didn't have enough room anywhere else, so we had to add some sites. So those are the two.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
The next is to approve an agreement with McMahon Associates for general engineering services.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Mike. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2020 agreement with McMahon Associates for general engineering services. Are there any questions or comments on that item? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
The next item, I move to approve a five-year uniform services agreement with Elsco Linen and Uniform Rental Services.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve a five-year uniform services agreements with Elsco Linen and Uniform Rental Services. Any questions or comments on that item? Tom.
Do we own those uniforms, or do they?
Chad.
They own the uniforms. We basically rent them, they wash them, they repair them as needed. So it's a whole rental.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
John?
I'm just wondering, do we have an opt-out clause that we're not going to be severely penalized if we're dissatisfied with their service, or they hike our rate up in that five years? That's a long time.
There is something that if... Depending, they guarantee their services if they don't perform up to expectations. There is something in the contract.
It just seemed like a little bit longer than what I'm comfortable getting in on personally as a business, because I've been on the other end of that, where you get in a three-year contract, and it's like, wow.
Yeah.
Inflation.
I think that's probably part of the reason we got the price such a low increase in price was...
That was the other end of that.
You know, whatever, so, yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
And that is all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Next, we move to finance and personnel. Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, March 4th at 4:30 PM in the council chambers. Motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Zog to recommend a council approval of resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from the proceeds of borrowing. The purpose of this resolution is to allow expenditures for any projects that are anticipated to be reimbursed by the 2020 borrowing. Motion carried 9-0. Motion was made by Zog and seconded by Barrington to recommend a council denial of claim. Motion carried 9-0. Finance Director Ratkey led a discussion on the Outagamy County sales and use tax revenue sharing. The initial date for the documentation to Outagamy County has been extended to June 1st, 2020. Mrs. Ratkey will bring the item back to the April Finance Committee for further discussion. Finance Director Ratkey reviewed the estimated reimbursement from the federal and state funds on the storm damage of July 2019. Mrs. Ratkey will book her anticipated reimbursements and then work with the auditors. Motion was made by Fache and seconded by Barrington to recommend a council approval of a housing study. The cost of the project is $6,500 and will be expensed out of the economic development budget. Motion carried 9-0. Motion was made by Zog and seconded by Fache to recommend the council approval of the AECOM scope of services for groundwater monitoring at the county Highway S landfill through 2020. Motion carried 9-0. The administrators' reports and finance directors' report were discussed. There being no public comment or further business, the meeting adjourned at 5:11 PM. The next regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting will be held in the council chambers on April 8th at 4:30 PM. And then, I move we approve a resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing for anticipated 2020 projects.
Been moved and seconded to approve the resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing for any anticipated 2020 projects. Are there any questions on that item? Please cast your ballots.
Confirmed.
Tom, Fred. All voting yes, motion carried.
I move we deny the claim against the city.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to deny the claim against the city. Are there any questions on that item?
This was actually recommended by our insurance agent, if I remember right.
Yes, correct. Okay, there's no discussion, please cast your ballots.
I...
You abstained.
Tom, did you want to vote on that?
No, where's the change?
I don't know how to change it.
I don't know. Leave it alone. I don't know how to change it.
Okay, do you wish to vote, do you wish to vote yes?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carried unanimously then.
I move we approve a housing study for it in the amount of $6,500.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve a housing study be done for the city of New London in the amount of $6,500. Are there any questions on that item? Please cast your ballots. Hit the right button there, huh? All voting yes, motion carried.
I move we approve the AECOM 2020 services for groundwater monitoring at the Highway S landfill.
I think so, yeah.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the AECOM 2020 services for groundwater monitoring at the county S landfill. Questions on that item? Tom.
Is that going to go on forever out there?
The answer is yes. I'm afraid I'm going to have to say probably. There may be, if they ever change regulations or something, although we've cut down from monthly to quarterly now, so it doesn't have to be tested as often. For years, we were doing monthly testing, paying for monthly testing on it, so at least it's gotten better.
That was our landfill for years.
Yes. Transfer station landfill out there, yeah. Okay, please vote. All voting yes, motion carried.
I move we approve the license list for March as presented.
Been moved and seconded to approve the license list as presented. Any questions or comments on the license list? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have for finance and personnel, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Morak. Next, we move to Park and Recreation. Mr. Beesaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Park and Rec meeting made on March 3rd. The meeting was called order at 4:48. Meeting was approved. Motion was carried by all. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda were none, were presented. Review proposal by the London Youth Baseball to construct and donate a new park shelter at Pfeiffer Park. New London Youth Baseball presented a proposal to donate and construct a new shelter at Pfeiffer Park. The shelter will be a 40 by 80 pavilion with a 10 by 40 storage concession area. This new building would be located south of the middle diamond in replacement of the existing basketball court. Motion was approved and seconded and carried by all. That will be back to council for consideration tonight and consider granting the Director of Public Service Authorization to approve change orders for the Police Department and Hy-Vac upgrade project. The committee discussed authorizing the Director of Public Services the ability to approve change orders for the Police Department Hy-Vac project. The project has a contingency budget of $17,100. Motion was approved and seconded and approved by all. That will be brought to council for consideration tonight. Update on research regarding electronic pay stations for the Wolf Riverside Boat Launch. Chad Harth has been talking with the city of Oshkosh about a RFP they advertised for new electronic boat launch pay stations. Their investigation found that the Wisconsin DNR placed a bid advertisement for electronic pay stations that local municipalities can piggyback on. Chad will contact the winning bidder on the state contract for more information. No motion was made on this item at this time. Consider for approval an agreement with Wapaka County for the use of the senior center for a community nutrition program. Wapaka County Department of Health and Human Services currently rent the senior center from the city of the city for the nutritional program for an amount of $219 per month, and has requested to renew the agreement for another year. Motion was made and seconded and approved by all. That will be brought to council tonight. And discussion regarding televising city committee meetings. Committee discussed the benefits of televising city committee meetings to allow the public more access to the discussion behind committee and council decisions. Technology upgrades would need to be researched and considered for effective recording. The committee will make a decision on this item at a future meeting. No motion was made on this item at this time. Director's memo and report, the director's memo was included in the packet agenda and reviewed by the committee. Chairman's report, there was none. Committee report, there was none. Next month's agenda, we boat launch electronic ticket machines, broadcasting committee meetings. Motion was adjourned and seconded by Dennis Herter at 5:21. Motion was carried by all. I would ask the council to consider reviewing the proposal by the London Youth Baseball to construct and donate a new park shelter at Pfeiffer Park.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the New London Youth Baseball donation of new park shelter at Pfeiffer Park. Are there any comments or questions on that? Tom.
That's going to be quite a building.
It's big.
Big.
Mm-hmm. It'd be a nice addition to that park.
And we've got to be thankful to them.
Yes, correct. Okay, please vote. All voting yes, motion carried.
Next, I would ask to consider granting the Director of Public Services Authorization to approve change orders for the public, the Police Department's Hy-Vac upgrade project.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to authorize the Director of Public Services to approve change orders for the Police Department's Hy-Vac upgrade project not to exceed an overall amount of $17,100. Are there any questions on that item? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
And last but not least, I would ask the council to consider for an approval an agreement with Wapaka County for use of the senior center, senior center for the county's nutritional program.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the 2020 agreement with the Department of, Wapaka County Department of Health and Human Services for rental of the senior center for $219 per month. This is for senior meal program. Are there any questions or comments on that item? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. Next, we have Planning Commission. Mr. Steinhorst is absent tonight and asked me to read the minutes. And of course, it was a long meeting, so this may take a minute. Planning Commission met February 27th. Took roll call, approved the previous, minutes of the previous meeting. First item was a certified survey map approval for Jim Rickman at 220 Wood Lane. Certified survey map drawn by Carol Land Surveying was presented for approval. This map consisted of three residential lots that were combined into two residential lots. At this time, the owner also asked permission to construct a second driveway on the north side of his dwelling. This would be a gravel driveway. Hanlon advised that it would be acceptable. In addition, Mr. Rickman expressed concern that a culvert located on his new property was not draining his property to the wetland adjacent to the railroad tracks, but was actually allowing the water from that area to drain onto his property. His question was whether or not the culvert could be filled to prevent the drainage onto his property. Hanlon advised the question would be forwarded to Chad Hirth, Director of Public Services, for discussion. And the committee unanimously approved the certified survey map. Next, approval of murals presented by Wolf River Art League. Members of the Planning Commission reviewed 42 murals, of which 38 are proposed to be painted this year. All the murals except number 22 were being placed either in windows or on the sides or backs of buildings. Number 22 was proposed for the Pearl Street side of the bumper-to-bumper building, and the estimated size was eight by 16 feet wide. Hanlon wanted to review the zoning code regarding the B1 Central Business District to see if that specific one would be allowed. Motion was by Goller, or it was moved to approve the murals as presented with a clarification from Hanlon as to whether or not number 22 would be permitted. And Paul has got a note on here, I reviewed the chapter 17.05-10/3 of the facade regarding exterior walls and murals. This is the only mural that is proposed for the front of a building. It is my opinion that along with the proposed size, allowing this on the front of the building would be, would set a precedence that would contradict the intent of the Central Business District design guidelines. So, no, it cannot go on the front of the building, was the answer. Then, the Planning Commission dealt into recodification of the following chapters. 195, the building code, 270, smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, Article 491, moving of buildings, 421, the plumbing code, and 429, the electric code, and approved, proposed changes to those in the building code as we are looking at our new updated ordinances. So they got through quite a bit that meeting. Next meeting will be March 26th. They also noted that chapter 17, the zoning code, may be left as is for the recodification project because the comprehensive plan needs to be updated. Any change made during that update could then be addressed in an amendment to the zoning code. And there was no action for council tonight, so we will turn next to economic development. Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. There is no February meeting. You do have in your packet a report from Wapaka County Economic Development Corporation, and that's all I have for economic development.
Okay, thank you. Then you have the minutes from the, and reports from the Housing Authority, Library and Museum Commission, Police and Fire Commission, Tourism Commission, Utility Commission, Cemetery Superintendent, and the Building Inspector. Are there any comments or questions on any of those reports?
We got our Building Inspector back now, right?
Yeah, Paul is back part-time. His hours are listed on the city website each week. Well, I think they do it about two weeks at a time. And also on New London Connect, if anyone wants to go in there and check when the Building Inspector hours are. He's generally here a few days a week for about four to five hours, depending on his schedule. Okay? Yeah, and it's good to have him back part-time. Paul's got a wealth of knowledge. Okay, next, we go to reports of officers. Myself, I have nothing tonight, except just a reminder, the St. Patrick's Day is coming up, and should be a big crowd and a good, a good week for New London, so looking forward to that. Next, we have City Administrator, Mr. Leon.
Thank you, Your Honor. The only thing I wanted to bring up is just a reminder that throughout the course of this week, you're going to start seeing postcards from the 2020 Census Bureau. The census is very important for everyone to fill out. It's about 10 questions on the website. It's important as far as being able to figure out political districts, and particularly federal funding, grants, and so on, in your region. So I'm encouraging citizens to fill out that form, or go online and fill out the form. Thank you.
I would add to that, and it's supposed to be very easy to go online and fill it out this year also, from what I've read, but very important that everybody do so. We want to, as big a count as we can eras.
Correct.
What do we say, a full account or whatever, but get everybody counted, because a lot of federal aid depends on population and the amount of people that you have in town, but also a lot of state aid is tied to those same numbers, so it's very important. Okay, next, we have a city clerk.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder, the April 7th election is coming up, and we have not received the ballots yet, but as soon as we do, those absentee ballots will go out in the mail. So you can expect by next Tuesday, March 19th, that you can come and vote in person at City Hall during regular business hours, 8:00 AM till 4:30, Monday through Friday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next Tuesday is March 17th, isn't it?
Pardon?
Isn't next, next Tuesday?
Tuesday, the 17th, yep.
17th, yep.
Census of St. Patrick's, I knew when that was.
I don't know, are we allowed to have any civic business on St. Patrick's Day, Mike?
Sure.
Oh, okay. Good. Thank you. Next, we go to Utility Manager, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Water Department's been quite busy over the last, actually, over the entire winter. We've been working on our well buildings, and we've also had some issues with our water tower. The Northeast New London, Northeast New London Business Center tower has had an expansion joint leak. We've got quotes and repairs, and that's going to be done in April. We have that one repaired, as long as we have the inspector, and he's going to inspect that tower when it's dry, because it has to be drained to do the repair. They'll do an inside and, a wet interior inspection and an outside dry interior inspection. We're also going to have him do two dry exterior inspections on the Smith Street and Flora Hill, excuse me, not Smith Street, but Industrial Park and Flora Hill Towers. We've been working on our VSD at the booster pump. We used to have just control that with a valve. Now we have a variable speed drive, so we're trying to tweak it in our skater system. I think they have one motor left to tweak in. Our well 8 project seems to be moving along. We've got electricians up there now. Hopefully, next week is a big week for Rural Water Association, so all our vendors are going to be in La Crosse celebrating. So they'll be back. So, they'll be back the following week to hopefully get our well back online and in service. Hopefully, by the end of March, we'll be in service with a new well on Oshkosh Street. The Romanesco subdivision continues to move forward. As of this evening, they have got the water main installed on Penny Lane, which is a little side road going to the east. We have probably two, two days of work to finish the water main out to W, and then they have to go back and do pressure tests back to these services. So, I'm hoping that in two weeks from now that that water, part of, part of that subdivision job will be completed by Romanesco. Only thing left for the utility to do there will be the electric stuff, once the right of ways are cleared for us, we have free access. So, hopefully by the end of the month, we'll have a well online, and we'll have the Romanesco subdivision in for water, and then we'll be working on the water tower, and right after that is hydrant flushing. So, it's been a very busy few months, plus all the rail repairs that have been going on. Our line crews, on the other hand, have been doing pole replacements. They've got 39 poles changed out since the first of the year, and they are also changing out LED lights. Mike and Jay will be attending that, that conference in La Crosse, so they'll be doing that. The other thing that happened since our last council meeting was three members of the utility went to Washington DC to the APPA legislative rally. At that rally, we were able to meet with Mike Gallagher, Senator Baldwin and Johnson, and we had an opportunity to meet with the Trump administration, two officials there, which is the first time in all the years I've gone to Washington that's happened. But we did talk to them about our main issues, which is pole contacts. G5 is the big topic everybody's talking about. We just don't want a federal mandate telling us what our pole rentals would be from the federal government. We have a nice formula for that, we'd like to say that's state, state-controlled here. We also talked about protecting our tax exempt bonding and also trying to raise the exemption from 10 million to 30 million, because the 10 million was set in 1980. We support that being changed in the tax law to $30 million. It's about the same amount of money when you spend it today. The other thing we supported with our, with our group was cybersecurity for the electric system and the national grid, and we're very fortunate that Mike Gallender, Gallagher is one of the head people on the committee for cybersecurity. So, we got to meet all those individuals, we had a good solid meeting. They thanked us for coming and told us it's important that we continue to go out there to be a face in Washington so that our subject matter stays current and fresh in their minds. So, it was a successful trip, and that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Anybody have a question for Steve? Steve, I've had a couple of people ask me, you're not going to have the recycle for electronic equipment this year, is that correct?
We are doing that on May 2nd.
Well, you are going to have it this year.
We are doing it May 2nd at, at the utility office.
Okay, thank you.
From 8 to 12.
Alright, thank you.
And we did not do it last year. I cannot say if they'll do it next year, but will be done in 2020.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, is there somewhere where we can find a list of what you will and won't accept?
Yeah, there's posters will be set around town, and it's everything but refrigerators, basically. And bat, maybe not batteries, but paint and stuff like that, it's just electronics. If you can plug it in, or it takes a battery, that's all recyclable.
Okay, I've been asked, will you accept printers?
Yes.
Okay, good. That'll make my person happy. Probably including my wife. Okay, next we have Mr. Hearth, Director of Public Services.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I want to let everybody know we have openings for our March 20th babysitting class. If you have a son or daughter interested in that type of training, think about signing up ASAP. The registration deadline for that is this Friday, March 13th. Also, if you have a son or daughter interested in summer job, we have several positions that are open with the city. Right now, we're taking applications for lifeguards and camp hat and counselors. In the near future, we're also figuring out who's coming back. We'll probably have openings for street and park seasonal labors as well, so keep an eye on the city's website. And mainly, if you're interested in any of those, check out the information, but pay attention to the deadlines, because these positions are open for only a certain period of time. So, for example, like the camp counselor position, the closing date is April 7th, April 7th for that. So, just keep an eye on those dates and go on the city's website. You apply online for all those program, or all those open positions. And we're also keeping an eye on the river, obviously with the melting temperatures and the rain that we just had. The river is predicted to go up another two and a half feet. We're predicted to hit nearly nine foot this weekend. If you need in sand, if, if you're in need of sandbags, we do have the sand and sandbags available at the municipal garage right now. Right now, if you do need them, you will be responsible for filling up your own sandbags. If we do get to a point that we need to start filling them up on a mass production level, we will either, either staff will start doing it, or we'll start contacting groups or individuals to come in and help us with that project. So, I would suggest that you keep an eye on the city's Facebook site. That's been a really good platform to get information out really quick. If we have to get together and try to get people to come in and do mass production of that, but we are being prepared and working towards that. Also with the sandbagging, if it's something that you might not know much about, and if you're interested in learning more about that, the city and Wapaka County Emergency Management held a sandbagging class last week. If you were not able to attend that class, we do have it recorded and online on the city's YouTube channel. You can go to YouTube and then search New London Access, and you can find all the videos that we have for New London Access on there, and that sandbagging class is on there. And they talked about proper procedures and the, your, your objectives of what you want to do for creating the proper sandbag mounds and such. So, if you want to get more information on how to sandbag, that's a great resource, resource to go to for that. And hopefully, we don't need it, but it's there if we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we've got our Chief of Police, Mr. Schleter.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had three anniversaries, Brody Erickson, five years, Mike Carlo, 14 years, and Chase Schrader, nine years. And then just wanted to touch base a little bit about St. Patrick's Day. Wanted to remind everyone that open intoxicants are not allowed out in the streets and stuff. Keep it in the beer tents and in the, and in the bars. And also animals. Animals are not allowed at St. Patrick's Day Parade or the festival of any sort, except for service animals. Emotional support animals are not allowed. And also, this year, you're probably going to see a drone flying over the parade and stuff. That is going to be a law enforcement drone to help give us extra eyes up above in case there is ever sort of an emergency that we can see what's going on right away and have people direct us as to where we need to go. So, if you see that, that's one of our drones, not the city of New London, it's but another law enforcement agency. So, we'll probably also be able to get some video for the city of the event to be able to, for them to use at a later time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, our Fire Chief, Mr. Wolfher.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Two service anniversaries tonight. Mark Hunskey, 36 years. Nick Wickman, six years. Also, um, about a week and a half ago, we received the Buffalo back with a, with a rebuilt engine. We had a little celebration last night. And so, we're encouraging anyone who is interested to come and, and look at the Buffalo. It's there. The, the funding to get that engine rebuilt was all from our fundraisers normally in the fall. So, come down and take a look at it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other business to come before council tonight?
Moved to adjourn.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.